Lights are on or not?
They're on.
Okay. Good evening, the July 18th meeting of the Planning Commission is now open. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to give this to the flag of the United States of America. For which stands one nation under God, in the goodness of the Lord, delivering justice for all.
Thank you. Kate, will you call the roll please?
Sure. Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Patty Crowen.
Here.
Doug Bryson. Bruce Robinson.
Here.
Sean Keir.
Here.
Miles Schlesinger.
Here.
And Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Are there any changes to the agenda or revisions to the agenda? None? Thank you. May we have a motion to approve the minutes pending? Kate asks me to ask you to approve them pending formatting changes that do not change the content, but just some minor formatting changes.
I motion we approve the minutes.
I second that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The minutes have been approved. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing? So, this is a time, if you're not here to talk about the public hearings we're having here tonight, but you have something else you'd like to talk about, this is your time to do that. Seeing none?
Yes, none.
Yes.
Please welcome, please tell us who you are and limit your comments to three minutes.
Debbie Williams, and my comments have to do with not this particular thing that you're dealing with, with Rhodes End, but about the permitting process or the licensing process. And what we've found in my industry as a real impediment to not only selling property in the city, but then making it legal for those buyers that are buying vacation rental dwellings to then take over that vacation rental dwelling and not impede the already booked tenants for the rest of the time period that they had been booked for. And I'm specifically speaking about properties that are in the VR zone or in commercial zones. Currently, it is taking over 60 days to get those licenses through the city because of, mainly because of two things. One is a 14-day comment period, and the other is a 20-day appeal period. Together, those 34 days. And rate locks are 60 days long. So, if a buyer buys a home that is currently an active VRD and has been licensed as a VRD, they have to send out a 14-day comment period, along with the time that they are doing their due diligence to verify that it is within health and safety standards and landscaping standards and parking standards. And then, after it is approved by the senior planner, then they send out a 20-day appeal period. And why we have to have an appeal period for an outright use zone doesn't make any sense. So what we're coming into, or what we're having problems with, is people that then are forced to close on a transaction without the VRD license and then are not legally able to rent to those people that have booked possibly sometimes a year out. And that puts that previous seller in jeopardy and that buyer in jeopardy, and the rate lock expires within 60 days. So, if we have an outright use, why do we need an appeal period? Why do we need a 14-day comment period that is creating this bottleneck of problems for, not just problems for the people that are involved in the transaction, but also problems for the city? Because you're putting buyers and sellers and renters at risk. So, I am asking that we look at possibly taking one of those time periods away so that it can be within the guise of a normal transaction. That was it.
Are there any final orders, resolutions, or written communications? None? So we do have public hearings tonight?
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
What she was talking about, the permitting process and something, is that required for any other properties, or is it strictly just something required for a VRD transfer?
It's required for approval of VRDs.
In other words, to make a license itself?
We can't transfer a license.
Right.
So, a new buyer has to apply in their own name.
Would they be able to just apply earlier so that they can make up this time before the closing, or have a time generally close?
Well, a lot of times, as I understand it, the time for financing and the time between signing the contract and the closing is longer than, those times are shorter than the time that it takes to get an approval. We're looking into that, into the whole thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Remember the microphone.
It is now 6:11 PM. The public hearing is now open for File ZOA 2017-07 and CPA and ZZ 2017-03. File ZOA 2017-07 amends the comprehensive plan to add a new development category, single-family residential Rhodes End District R1RE. Further, it amends Title 17 zoning by adding a new chapter, 17.17, single-family residential Rhodes End R1RE. It amends Section 1780.050, vacation rental dwelling criteria, to establish a cap on the number of vacation rental dwellings in the new R1RE zone that may operate with no restriction on rental nights per year. File CPA and ZZ 2017-03 proposes to amend the comprehensive plan and zoning map to rezone approximately 900 tax lots in the Rhodes End neighborhood, from Lincoln County's suburban residential plan designation and residential R1A zoning designation, to the new single-family residential Rhodes End R1RE. It further amends the maps to rezone seven tax lots from Lincoln County's suburban residential and public facilities plan designations and residential R1A zoning designation to the Lincoln City Park Zone. These tax lots are the Rhodes End State Park and one lot owned by Lincoln County. All of these properties were annexed to Lincoln City in July 2013. The Planning Commission's role in this legislative process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony, as well as information from staff, and make a recommendation to the city council, who will hold an additional public hearing. The city council may adopt the Planning Commission recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or may take other action, including declining to make a decision. Further, some may believe that this proceeding or parts of it are quasi-judicial. If you believe these proceedings are quasi-judicial in character, the following procedural safeguards apply. The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provision of the city's zoning ordinance. Testimony, arguments, and evidence should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties' opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal based on that issue. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. A brochure outlining these procedures is at the entrance to the council chambers, back there at the door. The staff will present a report and respond to any Planning Commission questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the Planning Commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. It's important that you provide your correct mailing address in order to receive notification of a final decision. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Commissioners, are there any abstentions or disqualifications based on conflict of interest, personal bias, or ex parte communications? Yes, Patty?
There was some question about conflict of interest, potential or actual, for me due to my residency in Rhodes End. So I called the State Elections Ethics Commission, explained to them my particular circumstances, which I think is what our city attorney suggested that all of us do with that question. And I was told that I do not have a conflict. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was out there.
Was there opinion that you would only have a potential conflict, or as opposed to an actual conflict?
Yeah. She said that it would be possible for me to have a potential conflict, and she laid out a number of ways that that could occur, one of which was if I actually owned rental property. And I explained to her we were far too lazy to own rental property at this point in our lives, so. And then she also suggested that it really wasn't likely to have a potential conflict, also because we're not the final decision-maker, we're making recommendation only.
So, because you own property in Rhodes End.
Mm-hmm.
You have a potential conflict of interest, not an actual conflict of interest, and you got that opinion from the Ethics Commission staff?
And the Ethics Commission staff said that she didn't think I even had a potential, so.
Any other declarations? Yes?
I'm also, uh...
Bruce Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm also a Rhodes End resident, own property in Rhodes End, I have no conflict whatsoever.
All right. So do we need to further with the script there, or not necessary?
The announcement is that they have potential conflict based upon ownership, except the Ethics Commission staff is apparently telling them that they may not even have a potential conflict.
All right, thank you for bringing that forward. Is there anyone present who wishes to challenge the authority of the Planning Commission to consider this matter? Seeing none, will the staff please present its report? Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you. Okay. I am going to start out with just a little background before we get into the actual ordinance. This presentation will cover both the new zone, our R1RE zone, and also the change to the comprehensive plan and zoning map. The Rhodes End R1A zone is the current zoning, and it is in this beige color. Surrounding it is this gold line, which is the city limits. North of the city limits, we have a timber conservation zone, it's a county zone. And to the east, we have R175, 7.5, which is a residential zone in the city. These two pieces are open spaces, the Knoll and also 60 acres up here. To the south of Rhodes End, we have the RC Recreation Commercial Zone. So, that gives us a little bit of a context. The, as far as background, the city annexed Rhodes End in 2012. In the annexation agreement, the city agreed to not initiate rezoning for at least five years. But the agreement did allow that someone from within Rhodes End might want to initiate the rezoning, and in fact, the REIA, which is the Rhodes End Improvement Association, proposed rezoning in 2015. It's taken a while for the staff to process that, but the staff has now come forward with a zone based on the REIA's proposal, somewhat different, and I'll call those out in the presentation. We're having our first hearing tonight, and we have scheduled a hearing for the city council on August 8th. So, 171250 specifies that areas annexed to the city will be classified with the underlying county zoning designation until rezoned by the city. And then, 178810 authorizes the city council to initiate by motion an amendment to the text. And 178840 authorizes the Planning Commission to study the suggested amendments and to recommend approval or disapproval. So, the city's comprehensive plan describes two categories of revisions, major and minor. This one is a major change because it involves so many different property owners. And, as you said, the amendments need to be in conformance with the statewide planning goals and the city's comprehensive plan goals. Okay, on the left map here, I'm showing Rhodes End zoning as it is today. I've already called out that this is the R1A in the beige color. The proposal looks very much the same, and that is the new R1RE zone that we are describing tonight. And except, and the whole neighborhood of Rhodes End would become that zone, changing from R1A, except for a couple pieces that are, this is the Rhodes End State Park, and this is a beach access that's owned by the county. And those are shown in green, indicating park status. Okay, so, the rezoning would rezone 900 lots from R1A to R1RE. They're both single-family zones. Six lots from State Park, that are the State Park from, this is Public Facilities, to P Park, which is a city zone, and then the north 72nd Beach Access from R1A to P Park. I had kind of jumped the gun a little bit in my staff report, and I suggested zoning a couple city-owned properties that are completely in wetlands to open space. We have not advertised that for this hearing, so keep that for later, and if you're interested, you could initiate that zoning. And those two are, here's the Rhodes End State Park, and these are the two that I'm describing, along northeast Salacy Drive. Okay, so the impacts of the new zoning. In addition to the changes in the zone itself, when the Rhodes End has city zoning, other provisions in Title 17, which is our zoning ordinance, apply. For the last several years, we have had this handy little binder sitting on our front counter, because anybody who came in with county or property in Rhodes End would, we would need to process using the county standards. And so, with all the quirks and intricacies of the county standards. So Kate put together that nice binder, and it's well-worn at this point. So, you know, we do see an advantage of having the Rhodes End neighborhood also in our Title 17. So that is a real plus for the staff in terms of administration. Now, what it means to the people in Rhodes End is that our sign regulations would apply. We have very limited signage that's allowed for single-family. It's a two-square-foot, I think, sign per property. We have parking regulations that are somewhat different. We have requirement for geotechnical reports for oceanfront properties to make sure that they are safe in terms of coastal erosion. We have natural resource overlay limitations, but we have very little wetlands. That's typically wetlands or riparian area. We have very little, I just showed you the picture basically of the wetlands in Rhodes End and their city-owned properties. Landscape requirements, we have are different, and I'm not sure that the county has landscape requirements. Tree preservation ordinance is something that we've adopted a number of years ago that primarily impacts new developments. And then, of course, the VRD land use requirements are, would all come into effect. This is a zoning, and I don't expect you to read this comparison up here, but it is in the packets, and it was online, it is online. It compares the R1A county, the current designation for Rhodes End, to the draft that was submitted by the REIA, the Neighborhood Association, and then also what we are proposing for this evening. And I will go through some of these key provisions in this ordinance tonight, but if there's anything in this chart that you want to call out, and we can certainly discuss it as well. One of the things that I don't believe I talk about elsewhere is front yard averaging. And there is a rather kind of a complicated description of how that's calculated in our ordinance, and maybe with the Planning Commission's permission, we'll see if we can try to make it more simply worded before we take it to the council. But, the idea is that setback for front yards and rear yards is 20 feet in Rhodes End, but they do allow that if your neighbors within 100 feet in either direction have shallower front yards, that you can have the average of the existing front yards, and if there are vacant lots next to you, the assumption would be that that would be the standard 20-foot setback. Yes?
Is that for Logan Road only?
I'm not sure, it could be. Does anyone else know that answer?
What was the question?
Averaging the front yards can be done on Logan Road only, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, so, we have 12 provisions that were called out in the staff report, and I'll just go through each one at a time here. The first one is the size limit on single-family homes. And I'm calling these out, and we called them out in the staff report because we think these are maybe unusual or will warrant some discussion. There may be others, and you're welcome to raise those at any time. So, the REIA has proposed the limit of five bedrooms and 16 occupants for a single-family home. The staff has put an exemption in the ordinance for anything built before the date of the ordinance, so we wouldn't end up with a huge number of non-conforming houses. I don't know how many really are that size anyway, but this would make sure that they are not non-conforming. Other city zoning districts do not have a size limitation on single-family homes, and I find, in my experience, this is somewhat unusual. I've seen minimum size requirements in CCNRs where they want to make sure everybody has an equally nice or large house. We do have that limitation on VRDs in residential zones, and that's in the building specialty code, that's the limit for single-family construction. So, we would say that if we were going to have a restriction of this sort, that we would probably rather see it in health and safety in Title 8 rather than in Title 17. So, we don't necessarily see that as a zoning issue. Okay, manufactured homes. We have, in our city code, restrictions on manufactured homes that resemble these, but we actually have been thinking about taking them out. We have had a couple people come up to the counter who, for instance, said that they would like to have a smaller home, a mobile home, and there are single wides, and this describes a double wide, I believe. But, this is unique to manufactured homes that we're requiring these things, we do not require them of stick-built homes. Okay.
Deborah, you said you were thinking about removing that restriction in the city? Why?
Well, one of the reasons is we've had, because we do have some people who would like to live in a smaller manufactured home, say for instance, a park model or a single wide. And, so, because we don't have that kind of restriction on any other kind of single families except for manufactured homes, we've been thinking that maybe that's, would be reasonable to remove that from the manufactured homes as well. All right, duplexes. The REIA proposal would not allow duplexes. The staff's proposal allows duplexes on corner lots with one entrance per street. So, on a corner lot, you have two street frontages. The idea would be that each unit would face its own street frontage, so from either street it would look like a single-family house would have one front door. The, we do allow duplexes in city zones. We do require an 8,000-square-foot minimum for duplexes, whereas, you know, otherwise it's 5,000 or 7,500.
Are you speaking about a lot size?
Lot size there, yes, thank you. So, one of our, a person, one person who sent us testimony actually sent us a photograph of a duplex that has two different units facing different streets. Gary, did you have?
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
I don't have my hand up.
Oh, all right, okay. So, just a little information here, there are approximately 14 duplexes now in Rhodes End. Vacation rental dwellings. The proposed ordinance allows VRDs, vacation rental dwellings, subject to Title 17's land use standards for VRDs, that's Section 178050. In the ordinance, the proposed, it proposes a cap of 25% of the lots in Rhodes End. So right now, there are 900 lots, 25% equals 225. Currently, Rhodes End has about 190 VRDs, 21%, and about 12 applications pending, so that would raise that, if we considered the existing and the applications already submitted, that would total 22.5%. I did have some information for Patty. Patty asked for three, asked three questions about VRDs in Rhodes End. First of all, Patty was asking, how many acres are in the R15 zoning designation in the other part of the city where we allow VRDs as a full use? And the comparison of the acreage is, in the R15, we have approximately 209 acres, and in the RE, R1A or R1RE zone, we'd have approximately 241 acres, although that includes the water tower and the tank, so.
And does that include the State Park lots? And does that include the state park lots and also the...
No.
No, that's...
And it does not include right-of-way. So it's comparable. It's not that much different. The second question was, how many VRD licenses have been issued in Rhodes End since annexation of the area? We believe we had 166 that we knew about at annexation in 2013, and now we are at 192 new applications and approved.
And 12 currently pending?
Actually, she's got 192 here. Our VRD person did this for me. And, so it would probably be 102, actually, if with the 12, then 190.
202.
Oh, I'm sorry, 202.
What, 202? What's 202?
Okay, so we have 190 BRDs according to this information that I put in the, in the plan, or in the report. And Danielle today was looking at it, and she said we now are around 192, including new applications and already-approved ones. That doesn't add up. I'm thinking it's going to be 202, 190 plus 12.
And does that include what some people call B&Bs and Air B&Bs and any other type of short-term rental?
Kate tells me, over here, Kate tells me that we have one B&B that came to us. They wanted to operate as a B&B, and there was no provision for that, so they got a VRD license. There certainly could be other B&Bs operating in Rhodes End that we have not approved. And we don't have a count on that.
Do you have a way to find out?
I don't know. The, one way we find out about, oh, go ahead, Richard, you have something.
We, we actually are checking various online sources for whose advertising is a B&B. And if we're able to identify the particular house, which can be a real detective job because they don't, almost never put the address on, you know, we will be doing enforcement on that. We did track one down yesterday that actually was advertising itself as three different B&Bs. So we'll be doing enforcement on that one. Didn't send it out today because we're not sure of the owner's address, but we are tracking that down. Probably send it out tomorrow.
The owner, you're not sure the owner's address? You're talking about the B&B's address?
Right. Well, we know the B&B's address. The information we get from the county is almost a year out of date on who the owner is that we're tracking down, just to make sure we're absolutely right on who the owner is.
So isn't an owner supposed to be on-site at a B&B?
Yes, but they're also not supposed to have any B&Bs in Rhodes End, so, but we just want to make sure we have the right address. Because what we do, we send out first-class base notice of violation and certified mail. And we just want to make sure it goes to the right place. We did it on another property recently, and we had the wrong address because of the problem of the county's information.
Kate, I have one more question. Currently, what's the law on who can be a VRD in Rhodes End?
County, county regulations?
Right.
Richard, do you want to talk about that?
Basically, they have to get a license from us.
But I mean, is, what's the restricted number or anything like that?
There's no restricted number.
So up to 100% could be if they chose to be?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else? We have received a lot of comments on BRDs in particular, and I just summarized them here. They differ a lot. We have a number who would like a lower cap, anywhere from 10% to 21% rather than the 25% that is proposed in the ordinance. We have had suggestion that we include bed and breakfasts in the cap and that we do not allow BRDs and duplexes. On the other hand, we have had testimony asking us not to have a cap on BRDs or supporting the 25% and including and allowing duplexes to be BRDs. So fairly much all over the place on that. Bed and breakfast is another separate provision that we'd like to talk a little bit about. In the REIA proposal, they would not allow B&Bs. Staff proposes B&Bs as permitted use, as we do in Lincoln City. And the restrictions on bed and breakfasts are that they be owner-occupied, that no more than 25% of the structure be used, rented out, and that's also not more than two bedrooms, that they rent, rental for any one room to any person, not exceed 15 days, and that limits the signs to 1 and 1/2 square feet maximum, and that they need to maintain the residential nature of the structure. In, in the R1 zone, the county has two zones, basically, R1A, which is the one that Rhodes End has, and R1. The only difference really is that in R1, they do allow duplexes, they do allow single-wide manufactured homes, and there was one additional similarity.
B&Bs. They allow B...
They allow B&Bs and duplexes, yeah. So, and that, that zone covers a lot of the county, probably a lot more than the R1A. So the proposal that's in this, allowing bed and breakfasts, is similar to the R1 county ordinance and also to the cities. Guest houses are additional space in, on a property, but they don't, they could be a unit except that they don't have kitchens. So that is what distinguishes them from, say, an accessory dwelling unit. So REIA has said in their proposed ordinance that they would not allow any business to be conducted in these. Staff is suggesting that a homeowner might want to have a home occupation in there or may want to use it for telecommunicating or a home office or something like that. So we're questioning the, the strict prohibition on using them for business. Yes, Chair?
Are guest houses allowed in residential areas elsewhere in Lincoln City?
As accessory, accessory uses?
Yeah.
Any questions? Or thoughts? Okay. Then we get to accessory dwelling units. It wasn't too long ago that the city of Lincoln City adopted an ordinance that allowed accessory dwelling units in the rest of the city. And the idea there was to increase the amount of affordable housing and also let homeowners add a small unit if, you know, it could be for a family member, but it could be also a way to generate some income on their property. You know, it used to be that our households were six people or, you know, I mean, an average of maybe four to six people, maybe more in the old days. Now we're talking about an average of maybe two people or less per household. So we certainly have the utilities to support extra density, and the accessory dwelling units do allow for this. The rules for the rest of Lincoln City where we allow accessory dwelling units are that they are no more than 750 square feet and no more than 50% of the main dwelling. They, the, the ordinance spells out certain design standards, that they need to look similar to the main part of the house, and that they cannot be BRDs. Also, it now requires that they be, that at least one unit be owner-occupied. I guess only one could be owner-occupied, probably. So, so anyway, that's what the city does with the accessory dwelling units, and that's something staff would like you to consider allowing in Rhodes End as well.
Do, do the accessory dwelling units' square footage count toward the 30% lot coverage?
Yes.
So it has to be within the 30%?
Yes. The accessory dwelling unit could be actually a part of the original principal structure.
Sure.
It could be over the garage or, and it could be in a separate building, but regardless, yeah, it would, it would be included in the...
Still is required to stay with the 30%.
Okay, public parks. This is in addition and separate from the park zone that we were talking about. So in the REIA's proposal, they suggest allowing parks, playgrounds, and other recreation facilities, but not a pool or similar facility. So staff is recommending omitting pool or similar facility as it is vague. I guess alternatively, we could make it more specific, I guess, especially the similar facility maybe what is, what is vague. And staff suggests if possibly a limitation that calls it a neighborhood park or something that describes it as serving the immediate vicinity instead of drawing from, from elsewhere in town and generating more, because we know that residents up there are concerned about the amount of traffic up there. And so if that is the concern, then maybe we could find a better descriptor of what kind of uses should be allowed or how to limit that. Okay, building height. The R1A zone that they have now has a maximum building height of 30 feet. So the REIA is recommending no change, continuing that limitation, even though other city zones have a limitation of 35 feet, so they get five feet more. But actually, we calculate height differently, so I'm not sure exactly how different it is than, because in the rest of the city, I'm jumping down to the third point here. In Rhodes End, the measurement is from finished grade. That means, for instance, if somebody brought in five feet of fill, then, and then they put the house on top of it, we would be measuring from the top of the fill to the peak of the house. And in the rest of Lincoln City, we changed that a few years ago, so we said, we're going to measure from the existing grade because we don't want people piling up a bunch of fill and then building with retaining walls so that they can get a higher house and maybe have a ocean view or whatever, you know, because the houses were getting taller and taller based on these structures at the base. So, so we, in the rest of Lincoln City, measure from the existing grade. So there's a differential right there that could make a difference in, in the height of the structure, the actual, the elevation of the peak. Of course, in Lincoln City, because we say we're, we're measuring from existing grade, some people actually dig down and they, they end up with a story below the existing grade, but the house doesn't stick up any farther than 35 feet above the existing grade. So anyway, it's not apples and apples, is what I'm saying. REIA has also proposed a 24-foot maximum for oceanfront properties. And, you know, staff is concerned that that would result in a number of nonconformities. So that is, would be unusual. That would be, you know, a first in, of course, the city where we have 35 and Rhodes End now has 30. So that is something that you should consider.
Deborah?
Yes?
Do you know anything?
I do not know, because we don't really keep track of, of height of buildings.
Most of the, almost, almost all of the houses built along the oceanfront in Rhodes End were built under the county jurisdiction, and we don't, we don't have any of that information. I would say there are no oceanfront lots now in Rhodes End that have not been built on, so. There are some that, that get cleared, but they're, my understanding is that there are no, no oceanfront lots.
There's one about three in from the state park, north of the state park, that doesn't have anything on it except a trespassing sign. And there's another one, two houses north of 74.
That was, that was, actually, I think that one was, had a house demolished on it, so I guess that one would be, so...
And then one north of 74. I think that...
Yeah, and that was demolished too, I think. So, but I guess, yeah, so there's, there's probably a couple, so. What would happen is that anything new that was built that was subject to 24-foot standard would essentially be, except for maybe those two, they would have the house, existing house would be demolished. And most of the houses along there are at least two stories, some are three, especially the newer ones. There are some that are single-story, but like I say, most are two to three, so we don't, we don't know exactly how many are nonconforming, but a substantial portion would end up being nonconforming.
All right.
Yes.
Two questions. One, what consequences, if any, does owning a nonconforming property have for the property owner?
Oh, well...
Nonconforming structure principally, well, actually, we changed the rules on it. You go ahead, Deb.
I was going to say that, yes, we, in our nonconforming section of our code, we say that if, for instance, a house burns down, and I get calls from lenders and appraisers all the time, and they say, what happens if the house burns down? Can they rebuild? And in our code, we say, for the rest of Lincoln City, that they can rebuild to the previous height and footprint with approvals from the building inspector, just safety things, the floodplain manager and so forth. So there isn't a lot of problem there. I'm trying to think what our issues would be.
It's mainly, isn't that for catastrophic destruction of the house? In other words, if you choose to destroy the house, then you're subject to whatever rules in place.
Yes. Kate, can you think of any other, any other problems that people with nonconformities run into? When we, when they want to come in for an addition, for instance, we, we would, would require that they would, any of the, like, an additional structure would, would meet the current code.
Is there any requirement, if you do substantial remodeling, that you have to bring the entire structure up to code? Would that...
Well, if it's over 50%, you might get into that.
Replace and repair. I guess then the question of whether or not this substantial number, how substantial is it? Because if 50% of the people are going to end up being nonconforming and thereby have major restrictions on their current property, we ought to know that going into it.
Well, and I think what we've just been discussing is really that there aren't a lot of major restrictions on a nonconforming property. The, the owners can enjoy their property basically the way it is, can repair it without really getting into any issues, but it would create nonconformities.
And it's related to the height structure. Is there any limit to what somebody building a house in Rhodes End can do for the finished grade? How high can they raise that? Is there any...
There's nothing now.
There's nothing now.
But once we change the zoning to city zoning, then the rest of Title XVII will apply, and so we will start using our own way of measuring height.
Got it, okay.
I'm sorry, you'll use your own way of measuring height? What does that mean? Does that mean it'll go to the rest of the city is doing?
It's described in, it's, it's, yes, it's described in Title XVII, Chapter 52, and can't tell you the exact section, but it describes in detail... you the exact section, but it describes in detail what existing grade is and how we measure existing grade and...
And Rhodes End would be then using that description of existing grade rather than finished grade?
Right. Yes, Mike?
I've got a question. Where the Logan Road is substantially higher now than the front yards, what is the finished grade if someone were to tear down that old facility and want to build a new one that you can use it, you can get into a driveway or have a...
Well, there are a couple of different ways to address that. One is that there could be a lower level, and then you would enter on the level that's closest to the street level. There is some provision, I just happened to notice this in the county code, about if it's lower than 10 feet below the grade, that you can have a shallower front yard, but in some cases, that doesn't even help because the drop-off is significant enough. We just have one that's currently under construction, and that was a bit of a challenge for the owner to be able to, and that's exactly what he wanted to do. He wanted to be able to have a level entry from the street into the house, and he's managed to do it, but it's taken some extra design work. Okay, so, let's see, did I just do this? Yes, building height. Okay, so we are finished with that. Minimum lot size, the REIA proposes 6,000 square foot for a lot area, minimum lot area. And that is what is currently the standard in Rhodes End. However, 84% of Rhodes End lots are smaller than that, and 24% are even smaller than 5,000 square feet. And so, you know, you might want to consider a smaller square footage. However, when a lot is platted, we allow a single-family home on it, whether it meets the standard or not, if it's an already-platted lot. What this really is going to affect is where there are few areas in Rhodes End still to be developed, and when they develop, how will they, what will be their minimum lot size? Will it be 6,000 as proposed or, you know, some other number? In Lincoln City, our R1-5 zone is 5,000 square feet lots, and in our R1-7-5 zone, it's 7,500 square feet. But that's not to say that we don't have a lot of smaller parcels as well. So, but as I said, you know, if it's a platted lot, even if it's 2,500 square feet, it gets a single-family home. So, and the same thing would be true up here. Building coverage, REIA proposes 30% maximum, which is no change because that's what it is in the R1A zone. Other city zones have 35%. And where we were just talking about those really small lots, we have some provision that allows them to build at a higher coverage so that they can put on a adequately sized home and accessory buildings. So here's another thing that's apple to oranges. We, in the city, we include uncovered porches and decks that are requiring a permit, which means they're probably over 30 inches off the ground. We include those in coverage calculations, and so Rhodes End does not. And so, you know, the comparison is not just equal. And driveways, the county zoning allows gravel. REIA has suggested, in their proposed zoning ordinance, that they would allow gravel adjacent to a private or unpaved street. The city, in the rest of the city, Lincoln City does not allow unpaved driveways.
Even unpaved streets?
Right. Okay, so that pretty much takes care of the proposed zoning ordinance. And then I'm going to move into the findings, which comprise the staff report for the actual map changes. And the map changes must be consistent with the goals in the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan and also with our statewide planning goals. And I want to say at this point, actually, that moving from one single-family zone to another very similar single-family zone doesn't have a lot of implications for statewide goals or comp plan goals. It has implications for individual pieces of property and for VRDs and, you know, but the goals are probably a lot more broad, so we didn't really have a lot of interesting stuff to tell you about the impact on the goals. But I will just run through them and maybe call out a few things. So the comprehensive plan goals, we have 12 of them. And land use planning is, we always say, well, so we adopted our comprehensive plan, we have, in accordance with state rules, state law, we have also now, you know, proposed to change it, given the proper notices to the Department of Land Conservation and Development and the neighbors. And so we are consistent with that goal. Citizen involvement, I'll just mention that in addition to our usual notices, Richard has held, or attended several meetings up in Rhodes End and held an open house with Daniel Comer, our VRD specialist. And so we have gone beyond the requirement to try to make sure that we've heard from people and that they understand the proposals. As far as public services and utilities, we have public services and utilities up there that are adequate to serve either zoning. And urbanization, Rhodes End is mostly developed now. It's already urbanized, and so this zoning change is not going to affect that. Natural hazards goal, I do want to mention, and I'm going to flip ahead here to our map, this is, these are showing some of the mapped hazards in Rhodes End area. We have the tsunami evacuation zone. We have these bands of red, orange, and green, which are coastal erosion. And we also have flood hazard up there. So what will happen is that we will start using our, the same rules that apply within the rest of Lincoln City to those areas. For instance, when somebody comes in for a building permit on an oceanfront lot, we request that they get a geotechnical report from a registered geologist. And that tells us the setback and any other construction considerations to make sure that it's going to be safe and withstand normal erosion. So, and so we feel that that supports the natural hazards goal, which requires us to make sure to do the best to keep our property and citizens safe. As far as housing, there's really not going to be a whole lot of difference in the R1A and the R1RE, except, you know, where we have already talked about, if, you know, depending on whether the zone allows duplexes and accessory dwelling units, that could add some affordable housing to Rhodes End and increase the range of housing choices. So, you know, those types of things do support this goal. And the economy, our economy is primarily tourist-based, to the extent that the R1RE allows vacation rental dwellings and bed and breakfast accommodations. It supports the economy. You may also point out that retirees are a part of our economy, and having housing that is full-time is supporting that type of economy. So, and I probably should add a statement to that effect in the finding. Okay, continuing on with our comp plan goals, aesthetics is one of our goals for the city. And in Rhodes End, this R1RE zone does specify setbacks and height requirements, and I think that are all aimed at the aesthetic and the character of the neighborhood. So it does support that. Transportation, I'm just going to show you that we've already been working on transportation. We included Rhodes End in our transportation system plan that we developed over three years and improved in December of 2015. It does show some improvements. It does, this long blue line indicates this is a collector's street, which means it is expected to efficiently move cars as well as provide access. It is a very busy street, of course, Logan. And we do have improvements shown for pedestrian and bike as well as traffic improvements. And we're also showing eventually a connector that would go from Salacy through the villages at Cascade Head Development, and at some point, we hope, connect to the highway. So it would be a second way in and out of Rhodes End, which would take a lot of pressure off of Logan Road. So backing up a little bit, let's see if there's anything else about transportation I wanted to mention. It has limited capacity, but it's adequate for the area it serves, and it is fairly well-built out already, even though it does handle a lot of traffic. Okay, and energy, I don't really have a lot to say there. I don't think there's going to be a lot of impact on energy usage, to the extent that we provide improved bicycle and pedestrian access. And I guess some, you know, facilities up there, we're not proposing any neighborhood commercial, but typically, anything that, you know, provides for needs of the residents in the close vicinity is good for energy conservation. Overall environmental, the city's inventory of natural resources, including wetlands, and I pointed out the wetlands, repairing areas, fish and wildlife, and aesthetic and scenic areas, show one area of significant wetland. And we own it, and so we're not going to allow anything to happen to it that shouldn't happen to it, and we may at some point want to rezone it to open space. So this, that goal is satisfied. Shoreland, beaches, and dunes, this area is in the city's coastal shorelands, which is anything west of Highway 101. And to the extent they might be proposed for development, existing ordinance and comprehensive plan standards would apply and protect these resources. Rezoning of the already-developed lots would not have any environmental or other impact on the coastal shorelands, and so that is also consistent with the goal. Okay, the statewide planning goals, there's lots of repetition here, and so oftentimes I will say, you know, refer back to the other goal. But in number two, the major revisions, this is a major revision, as I mentioned before. So in land use planning, we are treating it through that process. And number five, open spaces, scenic and historic areas, natural resources. The proposed zoning includes Rhodes End State Park and a small county park that consists of a few parking spaces and a beach access. The proposed rezoning would protect these areas by placing them in the city's park zone. And, let's see, it does not include any of, any properties that are listed on the Register of Historic Places. We only have one, which is the Dorchester House. Findings concerning the comprehensive plan's overall environmental goal and various other goals are incorporated by reference. We feel that this is consistent. Number six, air, water, and land resource quality. The current building and public work standards for new development require protection of these resources. And so, you know, we do have substantial, substantially developed anyway, so we feel that essentially this is consistent. Along, okay, for these goals, natural hazards, we already talked about, recreational needs. I will mention that we also included Rhodes End in our Parks Master Plan, which was just approved. And we showed specifically for the Rhodes End State Park, some improvements, such as possibly a picnic shelter, some playground equipment, which does not exist now in Rhodes End. And also, the plan considered having some, using this, these wetlands as sort of nature education opportunity, maybe bird watching, that kind of passive recreation that is consistent with open space. So we find it consistent with our recreation goal. Whoops. Economic development, same as I've discussed previously, housing, public facilities, and transportation. So moving on, energy, I still don't have a lot to say about energy. Urbanization, it already is. Willamette Greenway, and it is not relevant here. Estuary Resources would be in Salmon River or Seletz River, so not relevant to Rhodes End. Coastal shorelands, beaches, and dunes, we've already discussed. Ocean resources, this rezoning is not going to affect the ocean. So... So we're at the point of turning it back to you. Staff would recommend that you take testimony on the new zone and the map, that you deliberate, possibly by formulating recommendations for each of the provisions of the new zone. And then make a recommendation on zoning ordinance, 2017-07, which is the new R1RE, as is or with changes, and make a recommendation on the map that would change. And of course, we have a combined comprehensive plan and zoning map, so we're, it's affecting both. And there were a couple of places, and Steve and I talked about one sentence in the ordinance that we thought was redundant and was really hard to understand. And so if, I would ask, suggest that if you have found any of those kinds of things, that you could direct staff to see if we can improve the wording before we take it on to the city council. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Deborah.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, now is our time to ask Deborah more questions, if we haven't finished asking all the questions that we have. If you have a question to ask, please raise your hand, and I'll recognize you.
Are hot tubs considered accessory use?
Could you repeat your question, please?
Are hot tubs considered an accessory use?
I would say yes.
So is there any requirements or restrictions on placement or operation of hot tubs in this proposed rezoning? Or is it nested somewhere in the city zoning?
We have some restrictions on hot tubs in our health and safety section of the code, and we also have noise restrictions that apply. Other than that, no.
Okay. Does the same go for fire pits?
I...
Fire pits?
I don't know. Do you, Kate, or Richard?
So when someone applies for a vacation, we do, we do look at placement of hot tubs and fire pits, and we don't have standards for where they are, but if there are a number of complaints related to those within a time period, then they can be required to, definitely in the case of fire pits, to get rid of them. And those are generally found in conditions of approval for land use approvals, though. That, in Rhodes End right now, we don't look at that type of condition. That in Rhodes End right now, we don't look at that type of condition, but we will going forward. So, yeah, hot tubs and, and fire pits are two of the things that is encourage people to stay outside longer and have potential to create noise problems. So we do look at them, but the code doesn't say, for example, they have to be a certain distance from a property line or a distance from someone else's house.
It does not.
Does not.
You know, 25 percent, can you help me understand how you got to that number for the number of allowed VRDs?
Well, right now, with the applications that we've received and are processing and the existing VRDs in Rhodes End, we're at 22.5. When we considered a cap for the R15 zone, we made it a little bit higher than existing to allow for just a little bit of growth. So whether that's comparable to this, you know, it, maybe this is more than what we, the growth that we allowed in the R15 zone, but that's, that was basically the thinking.
So in, I, I wasn't here when the whole VRD issues went down, so excuse me for not knowing.
You could probably watch the videos if you'd really like to. There are hours of entertainment.
About watching the video. But did it go from, what did it go from and what did it go to in the R1 zone?
Well, it's not that easy to answer because in the previous VRD regulations, we allowed VRDs in other zones as well, the R175, for instance, and RM. So when, when, this is a different concept for us. And the idea was that most of the existing VRDs were in the R15 zone already. And so that was a kind, a way of describing and limiting where full-time VRDs could be. So, but there were still a number of residents, permanent residents, who lived in, and a lot of permanent residents who still lived in the R15 zone, who did not want to be totally overrun with VRDs. So through compromise and discussion, the city arrived at putting a cap on the total number of full-time VRDs in the R15 zone. And they picked a number that was fairly close, or a percentage that, that included all approved to date and, and a little bit of growth. And we have in the past, I guess that's just been a year or two ago, and we are close to that cap.
So do you, did you consider that the Rhodes End situation is comparable in terms of being over, I mean, if, if the concern was that you didn't want a neighborhood to be overrun with VRDs? And so you went with 10 percent, which is one in 10, my math is right. In Rhodes End, you went to 25 percent, which is one in.
That's because, essentially because Rhodes End was already at, you know, 21, 22 and a half, so.
I, I guess my question is, isn't the same concern about being overrun applicable to Rhodes End?
Well, that certainly is a consideration. And, you know, I think that's up to the Planning Commission and the council to figure out what the right percentage is on the cap, if you want a cap.
Okay. I'll defer to someone else until I think of my others.
Question, Commissioner, here.
How many total VRDs would this additional 225 max put the city at?
Well, from the, what we have approved now, it would be 35 additional.
No, no, I meant total for the entire city. How many would this put the total number of VRDs at?
You know, I could have asked Danielle about how, what our totals are now, but I think we have 190, we're close to 194 in the rest of the city because we have, that's our, no, we're not.
Well, in the R15 zone, we are closing in 194. Citywide, there's probably around 500, I don't have the exact number, it's probably around 500 VRDs citywide, including commercial zones, the VR zone.
And this would add 200 more to the older?
No, no, this would add 35 more.
This would add 35 more.
Bumping the cap up to 25 percent would add 35 more.
Maybe you guys aren't understanding what I'm asking.
Well, his, his totals include Rhodes End.
That already includes Rhodes End?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I was misunderstanding the answer. And, and we have, how many people, how many lots are in town? Would this, would that bring the number of, up to close to 25 percent for the total town? Or is that just for Rhodes End?
Well, I think there's more of a concentration in Rhodes End than there is anywhere else in town.
So would it be a problem to restrict the, put the lower cap in around 17 to 20 percent?
Well, we've had a lot of testimony, you know, supporting various percentages. And as I said, you know, I think it's up to the city leaders here to decide what, what's the appropriate cap.
Well, I, I was looking online two days ago, and there's still over 200 available for the Eclipse. So I don't think it's that we're not renting enough of them. I don't see why we would need more if we can't sell out the ones we have.
Okay, when you get to deliberations, I think that's when you can get into, you know, your opinions about that.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, Commissioners? I have a couple. I just wanted, in the staff report, we talk about the REIA as being a recognized neighborhood association. Can you tell us what recognized means? Does that mean it's recognized by the state as a public 501(c)(3) organization and by the city also?
Well, you know, I think we have some REI people here who probably can tell you about their 501(c)(3). I'm not sure about that, but I do know that, you know, the city has a process for recognizing a neighborhood association. We have the Nelskot Neighborhood Association and the Rhodes End Improvement Association. Do we have one on the lake now, Miles? I don't know.
I don't think.
No.
Okay. Okay. And that's it, so.
They, they get certain advantages under our citizen involvement program. They basically get more weight in their presentations and so.
Longer time for testimony.
And I think, I think reduced fees too.
Perhaps, I don't, I don't recall.
And then another question I have regards B&Bs. Is there any sense or any feeling that we may be on the verge of a major growth in B&Bs only considering? Anything to indicate that?
Well, Airbnb's have become quite popular as a way of advertising bed and breakfast. And this is our way of dealing with, with Airbnb's. I don't know, maybe, you know, Kate has processed these applications. Have we seen an upsurge lately in applications?
Not really. I mean, when people think of a bed and breakfast, and I actually had one for 13 years in another part of the country, you think of a big, pretty big house with a nice sign in front of it, where everyone knows it's the so-and-so bed and breakfast. And what we really see is someone wanting to rent a spare bedroom in their house, or maybe two spare bedrooms at the most, which is what we would allow. And we've received absolutely no complaints about any of them. I think there are 14 in the entire city. And I think a couple of those are what you'd call proper B&Bs that probably aver, they may even have a website to advertise themselves as a bed and breakfast, but most of them are people that just want to list themselves on Airbnb or maybe other sites, but mostly Airbnb to let people know they have a spare bedroom. And honestly, I don't think you really know if it's someone who has company at their house, or if it's someone who's paying to stay at their house. We haven't had any complaints at all, but we aren't really seeing people, you know, breaking our doors down to do it.
Can I add a little bit to that? One of the reasons we wanted to put this in as an allowed use is to reflect the growth in the sharing economy that we see. Things like Airbnb where you, where it's the spare bedroom kind of thing is, becomes more and more popular worldwide, and it's just a way of reflecting those current trends.
And I know we have a restriction against using ADUs and VRDs, but it makes sense to also restrict, restrict them from being used as B&Bs. Considering we want the ADUs to promote it, you know.
Yeah, that's interesting. Well, you know, certainly something you can consider, yeah. I guess I don't have an opinion.
You addressed this earlier, but I still am having trouble getting my head around it and saying, we know there are a lot of lots in Rhodes End that are smaller than 5,000 square feet, quite a few of them. And yet, in this proposed zoning, we are going, city has a 35 percent footprint, this would be 30 percent. And setback requirements from the main road are much greater than they are in the rest of Lincoln City and also on the side yards. So with all those factors taken into account, would it still be possible for someone in a smaller than normal sized lot to actually build a livable home on it?
Well, yeah. I hope that the Rhodes End Improvement Association people, you know, will, will explain how they arrived at those and, and whether they have actually tested the setbacks with the coverage and the lot size on the smaller lots. We always have, you know, an option for a variance if somebody cannot place a single family home on their lot. But as, you know, we have experienced, most of the variance requests we get, we cannot approve because they simply don't meet our minimum standards and criteria for approval, which is that there's a hardship and they couldn't have a single family home. And in most cases, you can get a single family home of some sort. Yeah.
So, but if, I mean, one of the testimony letters, someone indicated that the setbacks would prohibit them from building on their lot. And maybe this is a question for the city attorney, is that a taking?
I'm sorry, is it what a taking?
If, if changes to the zoning render a lot unbuildable, would that be a take?
If I could interject before I let, well, I'll give Richard a time to think here for a minute, but Kate did respond to that individual. And I think he had maybe misunderstood some of the requirements because, Kate, didn't you find that he would have room for like a 1,300 square foot footprint or something like that?
On that particular lot, but it is a good point that in Rhodes End now and as proposed, the lower building coverage number, the 30 percent building coverage and the larger setbacks are something to think about, especially when they currently don't count decks for coverage and the rest of the city does. And as we know, people do like decks. So it's something to think about.
Okay, Richard, over to you.
Well, you know, taking is, is misused a lot. So if you were completely unable to build on your property and we wouldn't grant a variance, yeah, you could be faced with a situation like the, you know, South Carolina case where, that, you know, a taking is found to exist. But that's why we have tools like variances to make sure that we don't take all the uses. Not being able to build what you want to build is not a taking.
Yeah, I understand that.
And lastly for me, this zoning ordinance would put some restrictions on exterior lighting. Is there any parallel to any other Lincoln City ordinance? Are, is exterior lighting restricted in any way?
We have in 1752, a lighting standard that says it has to be cast downward so that you have to have a fixture that does not allow anyone to see the actual source, the light bulb, and that it cannot create glare within the streets or on adjoining properties. We don't have anything about the surf and, and the ocean. And I think that, you know, there are a lot of places in the country that are trying to establish controls on night lighting, the night sky ordinances. Also, there's some research about the effect of lighting at the, during the normally dark times of day on, on sea creatures. And I'm not really up on that, but I know that that has been a concern too. So I, I think that's a great idea, actually.
That's an innovation, yeah. And it's also difficult for people who are walking on the beach at night when you can't see because.
Yes, I've had that experience, yeah. It, it can be blinding.
All right, thank you. I think, any more questions? Yes.
I just had one more. Thank you very much. Well, excuse me, what, what percentage of the lots and homes in Rhodes End does this new zone cover?
All of them.
100 percent? Are there no commercial zones in Rhodes End?
No.
Was the Dory Cove property downzoned then?
Was it ever zoned commercial?
It was nonconforming, pre-existing nonconforming. So it was lawfully established, but it did not comply with the existing zone.
So it was not a commercial property?
Right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yeah, I'm reading from this document that you have here. We handed out, and it's under background, second paragraph. "In the course of settling litigation over the annexation, the city agreed not to initiate rezoning of Rhodes End for five years, but other, but others could initiate it to request the city to initiate it, request, okay." The Rhodes End Improvement Association has asked that. Can you tell me how many of the litigants that we were trying to keep, we were settling in, you know, the litigation with, is represented by the Rhodes End group?
Oh, no, I don't know. But we, you know, we had, it was a controversial thing in 2012 when we did the annexation. And so I think that's referring back to then. I don't, I can't tell you, you know, who was in the REIA and who wasn't, or how many there were.
I guess since we're speeding it up, my, my concern is, you know, we told them we wouldn't do this until five years. They asked for it.
It is, well.
I don't like they asked for it, but did the litigants, the people suing us, are they part of Rhodes End?
Well, we are abiding by the agreement. And it is, yeah, it's been almost five years anyway, but yes, Rhodes End Improvement Association, it could have been them, it could have been an individual citizen, it could have been anybody who proposed an ordinance, as long as it wasn't the city imposing it on them.
Thank you. Any more questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Crown?
Sorry, Deb. Other than the wetland rezoning that you talked about earlier that you said is going to come up later, I suspect as an amendment to this or an additional?
Yes, the Planning Commission could initiate that, or the staff, or.
Okay. So my question is, do you anticipate, or have you considered any other proposed zoning changes apart from this?
No, not really. You know, I, I like to have convenience, like a coffee shop or a neighborhood bar, and I've heard other people in Rhodes End say they would like that sort of thing. A very small scale, commercial type enterprise. I've also heard other people in Rhodes End say, you know, no way, you know, we don't want anything that's commercial at all. But I think in the rest of Lincoln City, we have tried to create walkable communities, meaning that you don't have to get in your car every time you want to, you know, go out or get together, you know. So, so anyway, that's, that's the only thing that I kind of would like to see that I haven't seen, and I'm thinking maybe Bruce was, was suggesting something along those lines when he was asking about the commercial zoning. Everybody I've talked to always tells me how much they really liked having Dory Cove there. And you weren't there, but it was a restaurant and apparently everybody, you know, it was, it was the one sort of gathering place, I guess, in Rhodes End. So, you know, that's something to consider.
No more questions. I'm going to suggest, if it's okay with the rest of the planning commissioners, that we take a short five-minute break before proceeding with the rest of the meeting. All on paper?
Aye.
Five-minute break. Five-minute break. We're recess. The July 18th meeting, the planning commission is back in session. Now is the time for public testimony.
Mr. Chair, before you take public testimony, there's a couple of things I want to add, if I could.
Yes.
One, with regard to the percentage of VRDs, when the council set the number back in the R1-5 zone, one of their principal purposes in setting the proportion they did was to do no harm to existing VRDs. So that's why they didn't do anything lower than what existed. They also wanted to include a little bit of room for growth, and they want to see how that would go, and they specifically said that if we reached the cap in the R1-5 zone, they'd take another look at it and just see what, if it was appropriate to increase the cap or not. The proportion that they allowed for growth is similar to the proportion that staff has suggested here. It was, the existing percentage was between 8 and 9 percent, I think, and they allowed it to go up to 10. And so like, assume it's 8 percent, then a 2 percent growth, bear with me here, 2 percent is 20 percent of 8 percent. So, and here we're looking at 21 percent to 25 percent. The way staff came up with the 25 percent is that 4 percent is 20 percent of 20 percent. Bear with me, 4 percent is a fifth of the existing 20 percent. So it's just, is the number we came up with as a means of being parallel with what they did in the R1-5 zone.
Do you remember what the staff recommendation initially was for the R1-5 zone?
It was 12 percent.
12 percent, we recommended the cap.
Yeah, the council reduced it to 10 percent, yeah. The other thing I want to mention is that the proposed R1RE zone is, in general, VRDs aside, in general, is much more restrictive in what's allowed than either the R1A zone, which is the existing zone, or the city's R1 zone. For example, both, in both cases, the existing zoning in the city's R1 zone allows things like places, most of these are conditional uses, places of worship, schools, daycare, community meeting buildings, golf courses, mobile home parks, cemeteries, hospitals, assisted living facilities, and those sorts of things. This proposed R1RE zone does not allow any of those. Interestingly, for reasons that are totally beyond my comprehension, the county R1A zone allows transfer stations, which is where, you know, where the garbage trucks dump their garbage and sort it out to take it to the landfill. And they also allow heliports. And neither of those would be allowed here. Elsewhere in the, in the city, in the R1 zone, the city's R1 zone, we allow cottage housing developments, and that is not called out as an allowed use here. So as I say, it's much more restrictive, so.
Thank you, Richard.
I just have one thing.
Yes.
There was a statement about the health and safety regulations and the 16 occupants, and because there's some language in this proposed district about five bedrooms and 16 occupants. Just to clarify, that the health and safety occupancy limitations that are currently in Chapter 514 of our code, so VRD have established limitations right now, health and safety regulations in Chapter 514, they're tied to the state of Oregon residential specialty code and the limitation on lodging houses, and that's where the five-bedroom limitation and 16-occupant limit come from, that's currently in existence. There was an amendment last year to the health and safety regulations, it was ordinance 201626, and it's not operative until January 2018. But in that, that made some refinements to that and said, basically, 16 is the occupancy limit with no exception, whereas, except in a commercial zone, retrofitted to commercial standards. So I just want to be clear, although there's language in this proposed zoning ordinance, this matter's already addressed in health and safety regulations contained in the VRD license ordinance.
Thank you.
And Richard, what's the occupancy in a VRD? Is it based on number of bedrooms in the VRD?
There, in the amendment, there's a bedroom calculation, but there's also a not to exceed 16.
So 16's maximum for any VRD regardless of the number of bedrooms it has?
For effective January of 2018, that ordinance was adopted again last year. That is the limit. And under state law and in the way our code reads now, you're limited to five bedrooms, and that's absolute, that's been a law for 40 years. But the 16-occupant limit currently has an exception, which is based on whether or not you were built in July of 2007. There is an exception in the current law. That exception's going away in January.
So there isn't a connection between number of bedrooms in a VRD and number of people, the maximum occupancy? Can you have a one-bedroom and have 16 people?
No. Again, we did enact an ordinance, a council enacted an ordinance last year, and for some reason, it's not on my computer right now. Hold on one second.
Well, and the building code does, does have some standards too about that.
Yeah, but it's just reduced on my screen, I'm trying to find it. We have a limitation that was enacted last year. I got the wrong one. Let's see. "No event shall occupants exceed three times the number of bedrooms in the VRD plus one additional occupant, not to exceed a total of 16 occupants, except as allowed in Paragraph 3." And again, Paragraph 3 is the limitation based upon, if you're in a commercial zone and you retrofit to commercial standards, or a non, if you're not in a residential zone. So you can be in a mixed-use zone and retrofit, you can be in a commercial zone.
So in this particular situation, just for example, a two-bedroom VRD would be limited to six plus one? Thank you.
I want to add to that, too. The, in the proposed zone, the five-bedroom, 16-people limitation is not limited to VRDs. It's any house, so just so you're aware of that.
All right, are we ready to proceed? Okay. Now is the time for public testimony. First, I will call the names of those who signed up to speak on the sign-up sheet located on the entry table by the door. After that, I will ask for a show of hands by any who did not sign up and want to speak. Finally, I will ask for testimony from public agencies. Each speaker will have three minutes. If you are speaking for a group of people present, your time may be extended depending on the number of people you represent. Your limit will be 15 minutes unless the planning commission extends the time. Please advise the chair if you are speaking for other people. If the planning commissioners have questions of you, we will wait until you finish speaking and then ask our questions. Time spent answering our questions will not be counted in your time limit. Please come forward when your name is called and state your name for the record. If you want a copy of any final decision, be sure you have provided your mailing address on the sign-up sheet. If one person is speaking for a group of people, individuals in that group do not need to repeat the same testimony. Be sure to speak directly into the microphone so that your testimony is recorded. We look forward to hearing your testimony, and thank you for coming tonight. The first person is Phil Krueger. Welcome, Mr. Krueger.
Hi, I'm Phil Krueger. Mary and I live at 6715 Northwest Logan Road, which we've owned for 18 years. The first issue I'd like to talk about is the 25 percent VRD cap. When the cap was placed on other Lincoln City neighborhoods, it was set at about 10 percent. So the Rhodes End, Rhodes End VRDs are about 21 percent now, so it's about twice as high as other Lincoln City neighborhoods. 25 percent cap would allow that to grow to about two and a half times what other neighborhoods have. That seems like a lot. keep things around where they are now. I would argue for that. The other thing I'd like to talk about is the proposed 24-foot height restriction that would apply to oceanfront lots only, with all other Roads End lots having a higher 30-foot limit. For most of the oceanfront lots on Logan Road, a newly constructed home requires a raised foundation for tsunami avoidance reasons. We rebuilt our house about two years ago, and when we did, the required raised foundation was about four, a little over four feet. And our lots relatively high, most of the lots on Logan Road would require a raised foundation considerably higher than that. When building, the height of the raised foundation is included in the total height of the house. So if you do the math, a 24-foot house restriction would make a two-story house pretty much impossible to build on nearly, nearly all the oceanfront houses on Logan Road. That's a pretty big restriction. So who'd be the beneficiaries of the 24-foot height restriction? People are walking and driving past, wouldn't be unless they're extremely tall. The primary beneficiaries would be the houses directly facing the oceanfront lots on the east side of Logan Road, which could build larger 30-foot houses without the raised foundation requirement, so they could be quite vague and overlook the oceanfront houses. So the 24-foot cap would considerably restrict houses on oceanfront lots in order to provide a view advantage to a small number of much larger houses across the street. Is what's being asked of the property owners, the oceanfront property owners worth that gain? The unintended consequences of this 24-foot limit seem kind of serious. From a fairness perspective, is it fair to impose a considerably harsher restriction on the oceanfront property owners than other Roads End property owners would be willing to bear? Think for a minute what the outcry would be if this 24-foot limit applied to all the properties in Roads End. Okay, thank you very much.
Back here. Can I ask him a question?
Do you know what the current heights restriction is on those properties?
When we built our house, it was under the county regulations, it was 30 feet.
Thank you.
Our house is 26 and a half feet.
Forward. Thank you. Next person is Elaine Starmer. Welcome, Elaine.
My name is Elaine Starmer. My husband and I are full-time residents at the north end of Logan Road. I work full-time from my home, so Roads End is where I spend 90% of my time. We all know Roads End is far beyond acceptable ratios for rentals. New zoning efforts have been years in the making, all the while even more licenses have been granted for various types of short-term rentals. There is nothing more, that is nothing more than adding gasoline to an already raging fire. In the world I work in, it is gross malpractice to be complicit in making a problem worse before you solve it. Let us be clear, a short-term rental by any other name is still a short-term rental. VRD, B&amp;B, Airbnb, it doesn't matter. They all bring more traffic, more noise, more trash, more coming and going at all hours of the day and night. As such, there should not be separate rules for B&amp;Bs versus VRDs. A rental is a rental is a rental. The very fact that a commercial status is being considered to allow a VRD to be rented 365 days a year is unconscionable at best. I would like to know the rationale that makes this acceptable in a residential neighborhood. The very word "commercial" should scream its inappropriateness. It goes completely against the stated purpose of the Roads End zoning. Living next to any rental is like living next to a seedy hotel. You never know who's next door or what is going to happen this time. Facing that prospect 365 days a year is a burden no resident should bear. This is not just the paranoia, I'm an old lady, and I am an old lady. People who live next to VRDs or near VRDs or a B&amp;B or an ABC or an XYZ have lots of strange but true stories to prove the point that living next to these rentals is not acceptable. As a full-time voting resident, I would request the following. Place an immediate moratorium on all, all short-term rental licenses until the council can make a final ruling and implement new roads, new zoning in Roads End. Because what's happened to us in Roads End is that the number of VRDs has ballooned out of control because there was no cap at all. So why are we starting at 22%, going to 25%, so there's room for growth, when we already, we already outgrew what we should have been at to begin with? So don't penalize us any further. I request that we amend the zoning to allow the same rules, laws, regulations, inspections, monitoring, whatever, to all forms of short-term rentals. Is that it? I'm out.
Any questions?
Eliminate the VRD commercial status.
All right, thank you. Paul Bell?
Hello, I'm Paul Bell. My wife and I are the owners of a home at 6423 Northwest Logan Road. We purchased the house and property in 1994 and have owned it for 23 years. The home, built in 1949, has had three owners. The first used the house as a personal vacation home, lived in Portland and commuted back and forth. The second used it as a VRD, and us, the third have also used it as a VRD. The property has never been a full-time residence since its existence. We are members of the Roads End Improvement Association, but do not support several rezoning provisions REI has requested. So following the staff report, just like to point those out, in Section 4 of the staff report, we think we could live with the 25% VRD cap. We do not support a lower cap because of the potential economic impact that could occur to us. In Section 5, we are neutral on the B&amp;Bs, but do not support including them in the VRD cap. These are owner-occupied, there should be a different category for them to fall within. Section 9, the REI proposed to reduce the 30-foot height measure from 30-foot to 24-foot, and you've already heard the impacts for somebody on the oceanfront, which we are. And I, you know, I'd just point out, I mean, we paid a higher premium to purchase our home on oceanfront as compared if we'd purchased one across the street. Then in Section 10, the minimum lot size, at this point, I'm kind of totally confused on what impact that would have to us. You know, with 84% of the lots smaller than the legal minimum already, and the other requirements, I'm going to try and get a hold of the planning staff and have somebody explain to me, we are on a smaller lot. The front of our house faces the ocean, the back of it faces the street. We have a fairly large front yard and on the front, towards the ocean, pretty small on the back for parking, so just those kinds of items, you know, the devil's in the details as to what ends up occurring as we have to move towards compliance. So that's what I have, and I appreciate, appreciate the work you guys do. I've sat on planning commissions in another city and my heart goes out to you.
Any questions for Mr. Bell?
Yes. Are you also a full-time resident here?
No, I'm not. I live in Monmouth and my address is recorded on this.
Okay, are you voting in Monmouth?
Yeah, we do the VRD. We rent somewhere around 150 nights out of the year. We wish we could do full 300 and whatever days, but it just doesn't happen. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bell.
Thank you.
Cindy Thompson, please.
Good evening.
Please speak into the microphone, Cindy.
I am a resident of Roads End. I am currently the president of the Roads End Improvement Neighborhood Association, so I'd be happy to answer questions about that. I did provide written testimony, so tonight I just want to focus on a few items. We want to thank the Lincoln City Planning Department, the Planning Commission, and the City Council for initiating a permanent rezoning of Roads End and for including so many of our ideas that we recommended two years ago. We appreciate this task needs to be completed to provide for the livability, security, and predictability in our community. The proposal, as you've kind of heard, began 2013, following the annexation of Roads End by Lincoln City. And the idea behind that was that we knew at five years, it's not a long time, so we gathered together a group of community members, including some of the VRD owners, property managers, Roads End members, anybody interested, and a plan was put together and voted upon by the actual members of Roads End in 2015. Then the plan was submitted to the city planning department, who held it for a couple of years. So in essence, four years have passed, and in that time, a lot of things have changed. Our initial proposal for zoning was based on maintaining, protecting, and enhancing the historical residential nature of Roads End, as stated in the Purpose section of 17.17.010. However, I want to note that in the later Section 4 of your zoning ordinance, seems to infer that Roads End is recreational playground rather than a historical residential area, which is now suffering from excessive traffic, parking, noise, garbage, illegal fireworks, and excessive use of recreational opportunities resulting in neighborhood, neighbor complaints, and safety concerns for unauthorized camping, campfires, and trespass. For the most part, I think, do I get longer?
Mr. Chair, since she is the representative of REI, I mean, obviously you have the authority to let her go further, but especially because of the rules.
You'd like a few more minutes? You may have it.
We, I think the proposal from the city has confused us a little bit, because we did not initially ban things, we did not include them. And a primary reason behind that was that we looked at the geographical nature of Roads End, which has one road in and one road out, and the heavy use of traffic already there, which has only worsened. We support many pieces of what the city is proposing tonight. They're not the REIA proposals any longer, but there are three items we do want to focus on. The one is duplexes, and you've heard before that that was not included in our original proposal, primarily because of the small size of lots in the community, and you heard that from the city. The Lincoln City allows duplexes on lots 8,000 square feet. I'm not sure we have an 8,000-square-foot lot in Roads End. However, Richard has restricted duplexes to corner lots, assuming the rationale is to increase affordable housing. If that is the reason for suggesting duplexes, we support that, but we do not believe that these duplexes should then be turned around to become VRDs. Secondly, bed and breakfast, you've heard quite a bit about bed and breakfast tonight, I won't dwell on that, but I think that we see no significant differences between commercially-run bed and breakfasts of any kind and VRDs. We understand that there are some good restrictions within the city for bed and breakfast that's helpful. However, it is just another word for short-term rentals right now. So if we're going to cap, have a cap on Roads End, bed and breakfast should be included in that cap. The proposed 25% cap for VRDs, again, you're going to hear a lot of opinions about that. We did not make any recommendations on VRDs when we proposed our zoning ordinance, the reason being that the city was going through an extensive renegotiation around VRDs. So we thought that would get settled and then we would deal with that when the time came. The process took longer than I think people thought, it was just completed in 2016. I think there are a significant number of residents in Roads End who feel like the 25% cap is just too great. It's two and a half times higher than other residential areas, and that's significant. Can I say one more thing?
You may.
It's, the proposed cap is basically unfair and does not represent the historical, traditional nature of Roads End as a residential area. Thank you for your careful consideration of this, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about Roads End, REIA.
Any questions for Cindy Thompson?
Commissioner Cunningham? I hear that you've got at least some of your members of your REIA that are not resident.
Correct.
Did you make an effort to recruit those people, or how did they end up being part of your group?
Which?
The non-resident members.
I'm sorry, what?
Non-resident members of your REIA.
Our organization is not restricted to residents. The requirements for membership are they are either a property owner or a full-time resident, i.e. to be a renter.
Okay, but you, did you recruit like a property list, everybody that was on, I know there's 907 land units, and I was just wondering, did you recruit all 907 land units to create it?
We're volunteers and we try to recruit as many people as we can, because basically we're working to maintain and enhance the livability of Roads End, and there are a number of vacation rental owners who are very concerned about that, so we're not excluding people, but there are opposing points of view within REIA.
Okay, it sounds good. I just want to know how broad your base was. Thank you.
It's, we're currently undergoing our membership campaign. We're at about 200 right now and growing.
Thank you.
We are a 501(c)(4).
(c)(4), okay. Any other questions for Cindy Thompson? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you for the time.
And next is Victoria, and Victoria, you'll need to tell us what your last name is. Victoria?
Hi, my name is Victoria McComme, and I have a property at 6451 Northeast Port Drive. I purchased it last summer with an eye to retiring it when it gets remodeled in about a year. Anyway, generally, I'm in favor of the rezone and wish to see it implemented. I agree with everyone that said I think the cap is too high for the VRDs. I'd also like to add that the Roads End area has a state park, which most neighborhoods already, you know, don't have to tolerate, and a lot of visitors, which is only going to get more, more use. And so some of the things in my letter are addressing details- And so some of the things in my letter are addressing details that people haven't mentioned. So I'm just going to read it real quick. Under 17.17.050(c), the fence height limits stated are too low. This is a major concern of mine. I have an issue protecting my property, and especially a boat that will be parked on my property. I called the Lincoln City Police Department to determine how best to proceed with protecting my property. The boat's too big to fit in my garage. I asked if they had any statistics on vandalism in Rhodes End. They responded that they do not have any statistics, but that it is in a high area of high transient use, so additional property protection is warranted. So a fence that is of suspicious height for adequate security is necessary, especially from the street side. I would recommend seven feet high max. And there already exists numerous fences in the neighborhood approximately that height. In addition to security, if somebody wants to have a garden, they need a deer-proof fence, there's lots of deer, and privacy is also an issue in a neighborhood with high transient use. So, which makes a fence a reasonable addition to property. And then, this may be something that's already included in your codes, 17.17.070. I would recommend a clause be added that construction on lots shall not impose problems on adjacent property due to water runoff and/or erosion. And generally, what I'm concerned about is the paved driveway requirement. If everybody, there's a lot of, my property, for instance, if I make, if I have to make an additional parking area and have to have a paved driveway, most of the lots are very narrow. My whole front yard is basically going to be a non-permeable layer, and it's going to be ugly, and I have other reasons why I don't want it, which are mentioned in my letter. And, oh, I have a couple other, just, if I can have just one more.
I would say that, you know, we will look over your letter before we begin our deliberations. And I think just glancing at it, that your general concerns really are not related to this particular rezoning request, the one about the drones.
They're all, oh, the drones, yeah. That's, it may not be.
Yeah, but I think it's good for you to bring that up. And I recommend maybe coming before the City Council and talking about that during the open-mic part of our City Council session.
Okay.
But we will read over the rest of your letter before we start.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right.
Michael Allman? I think he is not here. Joel Rutledge?
Hi, my name is Joel Rutledge. I have property, vacation property, at 7508 Northeast Neptune Drive. I'm not in favor of a cap on the VRDs. I'm already, I've been working on this home for the last few years. I've improved it, plan to get it done this summer, but if I can't, if I'm, if I can't use it as a part-time vacation rental, I'll not be able to afford to keep it. So, also, I think capping VRDs, a lot of people are in my situation, where they want a vacation home, but just outright buying it and keeping it up is beyond their means. And also, the property values, I think, with not being able to sell it as a vacation rental is, would also decrease the property value. So, that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to Mr. Rutledge? Okay, thank you. Janet Knight?
My name is Janet Knight. Members of the Planning Commission, thank you for addressing the Rhodes End issue. I've submitted a letter already, and I'd like to just state that I agree with a number of the things that have been stated already, and I'll point those out tonight. I am a long-term Rhodes End-er, having had a family home here for 60 years, and I care deeply about the future of that neighborhood, excuse me, that neighborhood that I love so much. And I believe and appreciate the fact that the city has worked hard to address a number of the recommendations and include a number of the recommendations that REIA put forward in June of 2015. There are two things, however, as I stated in my letter, that I am very concerned about, that I believe conflict with the stated purpose of the ordinance, and those are the VRD cap and the bed and breakfast sections. As you know, the stated purpose of the ordinance is to retain and maintain the historical and traditional nature of Rhodes End, and to promote and encourage a suitable environment for family living, and to stabilize the residential characteristics of this area. Historically, Rhodes End was just that, a neighborhood where people knew their neighbors, and they looked out for the neighborhood. That atmosphere now has changed, and that traditional nature has changed. As we have heard and know, 20%, or more, of the homes in Rhodes End are VRDs. This is much larger than the rest of the city. And at the same time, we have a very unique neighborhood with one road in and one road out. The security, or safety issues are huge. The amount of people that are in Rhodes End at any given time, in the summertime especially on the weekends, is a very dangerous situation, with a very narrow road, no sidewalks, and people walking, pets walking, children walking. And this is a very difficult situation for everyone. I think increasing the cap to 25% will only exacerbate those problems. And I would hope that there would be an effort to maintain the cap, if there is to be one, and I believe there should be, where it is now with no new VRDs brought in. I think the Planning Commission staff, the City Council, needs to think about the overall impact of adding more VRDs, more people, more traffic problems, litter, excuse me, litter, noise, and parking to an already overly saturated area. And I agree with others who have said that the bed and breakfast should be included in that cap. It doesn't matter, a short-term renter is a short-term renter. VRDs, VRBO, Airbnb, bed and breakfast, they're all the same. They bring people to the neighborhood and congest it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Janet Knight? Shannon Locke?
My name is Shannon Locke. My family has owned a home in Rhodes End for 49 years. We've owned businesses here in the city, and I've worked in Lincoln City for a number of years and volunteered throughout my life here as well. This is my primary residence now, and I'm a Lincoln City voter. I want to start out by saying that I support a 30-foot height on the waterfront. And I also agree that all short-term rentals, including VRDs, Airbnbs, traditional BnBs, should all be included in any cap that we institute for Rhodes End. I'd also like to propose an update for the language now being used. Instead of vacation rental dwellings or VRDs, I propose the city adopt short-term rental, as it would better capture what's being discussed here. Our home is surrounded by three short-term rentals and one non-rental. I don't want to think about having to have a complete surrounding of short-term rentals around me. Things are pretty out of balance in Rhodes End that way. And I would support a moratorium on new short-term rentals until enforcement can catch up with the demand and existing rentals can be better managed. A cap of 25% is too high. From a fairness standpoint, Rhodes End should have the same cap as the rest of the city. While I realize that's unlikely because of the preponderance of vacation rentals in Rhodes End, I would support a cap of 15%. Is the city equally concerned for the residents of Rhodes End when they say first do no harm to VRDs? Because I'm pretty tired of being treated like a second-class citizen in my own hometown. Which brings me to my final point. A lot of things have changed over the years, and things can't stay the same. But like many people, we are concerned about the impact of zoning changes on house values. Short-term rentals drive up the housing costs but don't necessarily improve our neighborhoods. To be a whole and functional community, Lincoln City needs to focus on attracting full-time residents. Wouldn't it be amazing if the tagline for Lincoln City was "The best place on the Oregon Coast to live and raise a family"? To that end, we need housing stock and affordable places for families, seniors, and everyone else to live. Too many short-term rentals will continue to make affordable housing for potential full-time residents impossible to find. It's going to drive people away from our town, and we need to be attracting full-time residents to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. John Oxonhold?
Nice to see some familiar faces up there as well as a few new ones. Steve, you're doing a great job running a tight ship up there. You learned well from Bruce. And I also like to welcome Patty to the area. Welcome to Rhodes End. I'm, lived in this town, born and raised in this town. Lived in Rhodes End for 15 years, and I am very passionate about Lincoln City and the Rhodes End area specifically, ever since I was a kid. That's where we'd go to the beach. And just like to give you a few comments on the proposed zoning ordinance, or zoning change. I can kind of understand why it took staff a while to process this. I think one of the reasons is because, you know, Rhodes End is almost built out. It's been built out under the existing zoning. So anytime you do a wholesale change to that zoning, there's tons of unintended consequences that you can get. And, you know, some of them have been mentioned. The landscaping, even though it's 30% currently, and 30% is also proposed under the new zone change, the methodology and the way it's calculated is completely different. And so I would assert that between the five-foot to seven-and-a-half-foot sideyard setbacks and the landscaping and the oceanfront and some other things in there, you're going to get a huge number of non-conforming uses that probably haven't really been looked at. And I can tell you sometimes, non-conforming uses for lenders aren't a big deal, but I can tell you, more and more, when folks are trying to refinance properties, lenders are, that's a huge red flag. I've got an employee right now that's refinancing his home, and it is because of a non-conforming issue, he's not able to close on the financing until some things are remedied. So, you know, my biggest question would be, I get that, you know, it's been annexed to the city and some tweaks are needed, but a wholesale change? I mean, to me, I feel like the things that need to be changed could be done through zoning ordinance amendments that would be maybe less impactful and have less unintended consequences, rather than just a wholesale zone change. Point two would be vacation rentals. I think, I get that, you know, there's some folks that haven't been around for that discussion that's been going on and on. Folks may not realize that a lot of new things are still going into play, such as occupancy, which is going to be completely change things. It's, and I feel like, you know, let's, let's see what the occupancy change does. Let's see, there's going to be that many less people, a huge amount less people per home, in every home with the new occupancy rules in Rhodes End. So you've gone from no limitations to quite a bit of limitations. I also get a little, and maybe I can have a bit more time, because I'm also here on behalf of the Bellhaven Homeowners Association.
I'll give you three minutes, Mike.
Sure. Thank you. The, you know, the vacation rentals, I get a little bit tired of some of the demonization. Meredith Lodging, which is my vacation rental company, along with my wife's, was recently named to one of the top 50 fastest-growing companies in the state of Oregon, and it's the only company on the entire Oregon coast. We're proud of that. And I know that there's been some questions about who's voting or not. We've got over 100 employees who would not be employed but for vacation rentals. And when we talk about the need for affordable housing, by the way, I have, that's another topic, I think, but I have your two solutions there, and one of them is wage growth. The other is supply. We're proud to pay our employees. We're actually raising it to 1515 an hour. And so it's one of the, one of the few industries in the entire town that has potential to grow. The only place that it can grow is Rhodes End. And, you know, I get that there's some folks that are new residents here, but you can't rewrite the history of Rhodes End. It has been, it's always been a vacation destination. It has always been a vacation destination. And, you know, I think when you look at places like Nescowin, you have a perfect harmony with vacation rentals, with permanent residents, and that will kind of also lead to a couple of Dever's ideas of making Rhodes End a more walkable neighborhood. I completely support that idea. I think let's spend some time on that, trying to find some paths and some sidewalks, and perhaps some neighborhood commercial, you know, coffee shop. It works well in places like Ny Beach and Nescowin. And lastly, you know, I know Bellhaven homeowners, that is the one plan development, and as far as I know, the only registered with the State Homeowners Association. They don't, they don't want any new zone change that was developed and approved under a very specific set of standards. It actually went through both the county and the city. And I know that if you pulled every single homeowner there, they'd all say the same thing. Lastly, when I did live in Rhodes End, every home I lived in, four different homes with my family, we did have a large number of vacation rentals. And I can still remember the one night, maybe two nights, but especially the one night where I was kept, kept awake, you know, by loud noise. So I get, it can be that, but much of the rest of the year, it was completely, you know, actually too dead. And so I think a well-managed vacation rentals are a real asset for the community. Poorly managed can be the opposite of that. As far as occupancy, happy to give the city any occupancy data they want. We have been completely full multiple days of this summer, 100% occupancy. With, with respect to the eclipse, we do currently have some available homes. We just, partly, they're renting for a little bit more money. But we just did in one day 12 reservations. And what we're seeing, for some reason, across the board this summer, is folks are making reservations instead of a month in advance. It's a much shorter time period.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
That's all a lot.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Oxonhold? Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Oxonhold, you, this is a question pertinent to the 25% cap. One of the elements that hasn't been discussed so far is the stream. The, how long from the time you decide to build a home that's going to ultimately be a vacation rental? At what point in that stream? How long is that stream? And at what point in the stream can you apply to the city for this limited, for this cap to vacation rental? What I'm getting at is how far in advance do you have to make those decisions?
Yeah, so it's, it's about a nine-month build for a high-end custom home, and I believe that you can't actually get the permit until it's completed. I defer to Richard on that. You know, by the way, I'm out of the home-building business. I'm actually planning to get into the, perhaps, the apartment-building business and try and make an impact on the affordable housing. But Jim Whistler is building a lot of homes, and he'd be a great, great person to pull on that, too. So nine minutes in it, I'd say nine months.
What, in your opinion, what's the implication of having to decide to build a vacation rental nine months in advance and then having this potential cap looming out there that might be exceeded before you got a chance to file? be exceeded before you got a chance to file?
Hugely impactful from a sales perspective, and you can independently get that from any knowledgeable realtor in town, but hugely impactful, because a high, high percentage in all of Rhodes End, I don't care how far back you go, has been for vacationers and folks that want to rent it on occasion, or more than on occasion, you know, to help offset the cost of owning a home.
Mr. Cullen?
So when you want to build any place in the city, you're faced with that cap looming, correct?
Well, right now, you know what you, right now, you know what you have in the rest of the city, just as you know what you have in Rhodes End. It's outright, it's, there hasn't been limitation under the county zoning.
Right, but I'm just following up on this question. How far in advance is the stream and what risk? I assume your question has to do with the risk associated with thinking you're going to build a VRD and then hitting the cap. And my only point was, that's not just Rhodes End, that's any place in the city. I assume we're approaching the cap in the rest of the city. I mean, there's nine licenses left?
Yeah, in the R-15 zone, yes, we are approaching the cap. Other residential zones in the city don't allow full-time VRDs.
That wasn't my question, though, for you. My question was, you mentioned earlier that you would, instead of seeing this rezone, you would rather see amendments. To what? Amendments to the county zoning?
So, again, Rhodes End, to me, is no mystery for anybody wanting to buy a home there. It's always been a high population of tourists and the, what was your question again?
I'm asking from what you said earlier in your testimony, that instead of seeing a wholesale rezoning, as we're doing, you would rather see amendments.
Sure.
So my question is amendments to what?
Again, Rhodes End has been built out largely for many, many years, so it's no mystery what's there, it's no mystery what's been allowed. And because it's already been built out, it's been built out under the existing underlying ordinance, zoning. And so when you make a wholesale change to, it's very rare that you're completely changing zoning on a completely built-out neighborhood.
Yeah, it's rare to annex a company built out.
So no doubt, like, I think helicopter landing zone, right?
Sure.
Shouldn't be there, right? But that, an entire zoning change is not necessary to change that element. All of the reasons that I've heard for making a zone change tonight, my understanding, I mean, you've got a very smart city attorney and a very smart head planner, but all of these issues, I think, could be better addressed through ordinance amendments rather than a wholesale change to the zone. Because I think you're going to get a lot of things that are different in the city and the city's even interpretation of landscaping. I mean, when you look at it on paper, you see 30%, 30%, you say there's no change, but there's a complete difference. I would assert, under the city's methodology of calculating it, you won't have one oceanfront home that would be conforming on landscaping.
Okay. Due to the existing landscaping requirements in the city ordinances that will be overlaying on us?
Due to the methodology.
Okay.
The methodology, yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions for? No, I have one question.
Are you sure, Sean?
It's more of a comment than anything, so no.
Question for you. You mentioned your PUD. How would that specifically be affected by this zoning change if it is adopted?
Yeah, I think, so in there, a couple, couple things. Number one, it was, it was approved with a 35-foot height limitation.
So would that change, would that, would the PUD approval trump any zoning change?
Anything that was approved under the existing zoning would, you know, it's already grandfathered now. There is no, well, in Belle Haven, I think they had a higher height limit because it was a PUD, so I think there was, there was an exception there. So there's, the rules of that particular PUD would apply in Belle Haven.
Also landscaping.
Right.
How about vacation rentals?
That is... good question. I believe that it, just subject to the cap, that the, you know, just as any other property in Rhodes End. I don't recall there's anything specific saying that these are all going to be vacation rentals, but I would have to look at what was approved.
Yeah, I think that in the council, in, rather, the county approvals that was discussed on.
I will say one thing. There is, you know, over 300 buildable acres still in the Rhodes End area that has not been developed yet. There's room for long-term rentals and more VRDs there to stay within that 25% cap. And then there's the Nelskai Gap area, which has a lot of land to be developed, new neighborhoods, add some more homes in, get some more VRDs.
Yeah, if there's 300 acres, I mean, I'd have to, 300 developable acres sounds like quite, quite a bit to me, but.
I'm not saying it's all easily developable.
Yeah, if you, it's, you know, adding 35 is, to the entire city, is just not a lot. And I perhaps have made a mistake this evening, and maybe I should bring, you know, more of my employees. In the past, I've refrained from doing that, but I think they should have a voice, too. And if that would be helpful for you, because I know you asked a couple people if they were voters and residents and all that.
Maybe. I don't know. I, you know, I, I just, hopefully, there's a place for your employees to rent that's affordable, that they don't need $15 an hour at 50 hours a week to afford.
Well, they all get an average of much, much higher than 15, and we're raising the minimum to 15. I think maybe that's another discussion.
Yeah.
And I, and I really, it's, I'm quite passionate about that, so I would love to talk about some solutions, rather than just always hearing about the problems of affordable housing.
Love to hear them.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like, I'd like to do that sometime.
Well, thank you very much.
Maybe I'll get a special invitation, Richard. Maybe I'll get an invitation to discuss, discuss affordable housing one of these days.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, guys, and listen, you guys should all, a beautiful day like this, you should all get a day off, so thank you for what you guys do, too.
And next, I may mispronounce your name. Doug Ride, is that correct?
Evening.
Good evening.
Yes, it's Doug Ride, the W silent, it's like you ride a bicycle. I'm here tonight representing Rhodes End property owners, easily known as Repo. I own a property on Logan Road, 6204 Northeast Logan Road. I am a part-time resident in the, in the city. Been a property owner since 2004, and I do operate my Logan Road property as a vacation rental. One thing I'd like to clarify or add some clarity to, there's been some discussion about REIA. Great organization, I'm a member. But this whole process that got jump-started here to, to change the zoning was voted on by 50 representatives. So out of 900 lots in Rhodes End, 50 voted on that plan. That doesn't make it a bad plan. It doesn't mean we shouldn't be doing what we're doing. I just want to point out that that is not the representation of 900 lots. It's the best effort that a group of people who are active and doing their best to make things better could put together, but it's not the voice of 900 lots in the entire community. Vacation rentals. I operate one, and I think a cap is fair. I think that we need a balance, and, and full-time residents, et cetera, need a balance to feel like they're not going to be overrun, and I think that's fair. We are where we are, though. For many years, Rhodes End, and through the annexation process that you referenced earlier, I mean, Rhodes End held their head high and said, "We are unique. We are not like the rest of the city. We are a unique area." And it's a unique area that's been filled by vacationers, as Mr. Oxenholt said, for decades. It's, it's a neighborhood filled with many, many, not 100% filled, but filled with many vacation homes, second homes, homes that have been in the same family for 40, 50 years. So a cap is reasonable, but there should be similar consideration to what was in the R-15. I think 25% is a reasonable number. There's discussion in the, by a number of people that it's too high, but I think that's a fair and reasonable number. It gives a similar cushion to what was done before. Last point I'd like to make is that implying that the VRDs are, are the source of the problems in Rhodes End, I just think is unrealistic. The problems in Rhodes End, traffic, safety, congestion, absolutely those are problems. But my VRD sits empty 200 nights a year. So that means there is zero contribution out of my property on those three problems more than half the year. So full-time resident is contributing more to those problems than my VRD half the year. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ride? Thank you for coming to us this evening. So that's come to the end of the signup sheet list. Is there anyone in, any person in the audience who did not sign up but wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. Please state your name and speak into the microphone.
My name is Joe Hinton. Thank you for having this hearing tonight and considering the testimony of the public. I just had a couple of things that I thought about during the rest of the testimony. First of all, I thank you for, for addressing the issue of changing the zoning. Partly, I don't know if it's set out to be a wholesale change. I know the impetus behind it was to try to keep Rhodes End as much like it was before. A lot of the zoning, the change, a lot of the details in the zoning plan that the REIA came up with were based on the existing county zoning, with a few changes just to integrate it with, with the city that we're inevitably going to join. So I do, you know, wholeheartedly endorse the, the change of zoning in general. There's lots of details. Somebody else said the devil's in the details, and it certainly is, and I suppose a lot of those will get worked out as time goes on. One thing that keeps coming up is the, or come up a couple of times, is the limit of five bedrooms and 16 occupants for a home. I know the reason that was, happen to know that the reason that was put in there is that the time, it was aimed at VRDs. Because four years ago, and we started talking about this, or even two years ago, the state did not have their VRD restrictions of five bedrooms and 16 occupants, and I was designed to address that, not to restrict developing homes, but anyway. And the other thing, I think there's one, I didn't want to talk about 20%, 25%, there's kind of a hidden fact in there that the 25% is based on the number of lots in the neighborhood. And according to Mr. Townsend, I think there's 750 homes there now, which is being added to by a few homes a year, but it'll be a long time till all 900 lots have a house on them. So to consider that 25% of the lots being, what, 225 houses, 225 VRDs, that's getting close to 30% of the existing homes there, which kind of implies that one out of almost three houses would be a, a commercial business, a year-round commercial business in a residential neighborhood. So I just kind of wanted to point out that sneaky statistic there. And there's a lot more things, but I had, I submitted some testimony, and I would also just like to suggest that it would be possible to come up with a VRD cap that's less than the number of existing homes, and it could be achieved over the years through natural attrition. I think that's been done in other cities on the coast, in fact, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hinton. Many questions for him. All right, thank you.
Wait, I have a question.
One question.
How low?
Big pardon?
You, you suggested the cap should be, could be lower, and then use attrition to get down to it, so what, did you have a number in mind you're thinking, or?
No, I mean, it's, it's, you know, fairness versus reality. 10% seemed to be plenty in other parts of the city, and Rhodes End has been burdened with more than its share, lion's share of the, of the VRDs in town for a long time, and asking for even more from us is, seems like a lot. I'm resident in Rhodes End, obviously. I hesitate to say a number, but something, something between 10 and 20 would be, I think, more palatable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who did not sign up who would like to speak? Mr. Baird, I think you had your hand up first.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Baird. I think I'll start out with Exhibit B that was part of the electronic agenda package, and I counted all the Lincoln City addresses that those 901 lots were sent to, and it was 255 of them. The rest of them were all sent out of town, somewhere else, which gives kind of an idea. But so then I talked to the county clerk's office and found out how many registered voters we had in Rhodes End when we were annexed, that had to switch over from the Rhodes End County to District. And that was 256 voters. So when you take into effect that, on average, 46% of the city, of Lincoln City, is married couples, you can take and apply that to this number and get a general idea of, you know, the, the density of residents that live in Rhodes End, you get kind of a feel for it. Turns out to be about, in general terms, about 17% of all the properties in Rhodes End are people who actually live here. Everybody else uses it as a rental or a vacation spot to come to. So I just wanted to relay that information that I ferreted out today. The next thing I had on it is, you know, I think a decision that we're making here is, do we want to keep Rhodes End as a residential zone, or do we want to create a commercial zone out of Rhodes End? And there's a lot of taxation and capital and value of homes. I mean, they'll rise when you, when you switch them over to income-generating residences. And it sometimes arbitrarily causes an inflated value that isn't really true, unless you can rent them. It becomes dependent. You see a lot of folks here who want the cap to be high on VRDs as a commercial outright use, permitted use, because they bought the house in that capacity, which was an inflated value to begin with because of that use. So I just wanted to point that out. I'm, look, I only have about 20 more years on this planet, and at, at some point, I look at it and I go, wow, which way do we want to go with this? Do we want to make Rhodes End look like, and we're very well-headed that way, Ocean Lakes? Let's take the R-1 zone. It's butted right up against a row of motels, RC zones through there, in creating recreational facilities, creating higher density, providing tourism for the city and income for the city in multiple ways. May I have another minute?
One more minute.
Okay, well, I am the author of the Residence Choice Draft, which I haven't seen anything about tonight. I would encourage you to look at that. It strikes a good.
It was in our packet, so we.
Okay, the other thing I wanted to point out was, if you want to increase the commercialization of Rhodes End, you might check out also, which is part of your packet, which I was the author of, which was the Aloha Amendment to the commercialization of Rhodes End, which either way I'm okay with, I just need to know which way we want to go with it. Any questions on?
Any questions for Mr. Baird? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Yeah. Anyone else? Yes. Debbie.
Just fell behind that chair.
Elaine, Elaine, something dropped out of your purse back there.
I think your phone fell behind the chair next to you. I just don't want you to lose it.
Debbie Williams again. I don't live in Rhodes End. I do sell property in Rhodes End, and it does have a great effect on value and the saleability of property if people can no longer use it for what they had traditionally been using it for. But I do live over Olivia Beach. And Olivia Beach is between thirty-five and forty percent VRDs. And I will tell you that, and I keep my sliding glass door open at night, every night, even if it's cold, so that I can hear what's going on in Olivia Beach. And it's an amphitheater, and I'm at the top of that amphitheater. And so, I can hear everything that goes on there. And even though it's thirty-five to forty percent VRDs, it doesn't have that big of an issue. I mean, I hardly, there's one time I heard somebody at midnight having too much noise in a hot tub, and I got my robe on, and I went over and I told them if they weren't going to quiet down, I was going to call the police. And they quieted down and went inside. So, it can work where, if you have good ordinances and good management, VRDs can be a very positive thing for a community. That's not necessarily the case in Rhodes End because of the transportation, because of the one-way, the one road in and out. But there is a development in Rhodes End that was a planned community development. And I really think it was very unfortunate that that planned community development could not apply for a VR zone, because it was planned and people, it's not in its CCNRs, that it can't be a vacation rental dwelling. And many of them are built like Olivia Beach. And so, if you do something, I would love to see that you allow that in a planned community development, if those residents agree to apply for it, like they did in Olivia Beach. I think that would be a really good idea. It's at the beginning of Rhodes End. It would allow for rental, and it's its own community. So, it's not interspersed with, you know, long-term residents. I just think it would be a great way to alleviate some of the issues in Rhodes End. Not that taking away those rentals that have traditionally been rentals there, I think, is a good idea either. I think that should go away by attrition, not by saying, well, you can only have, you can't have this anymore. But utilizing the developments that you do have that were planned with amenities within those developments, so that the people stay within the developments and don't, you know, they're not necessarily causing issues for other people around in the neighborhoods. I know Steve lives over Olivia Beach also, and I don't know that it's been an issue for you. Traffic sometimes can be a little interesting, but it's really been a very model development. So, that's my input.
Any questions for Debbie Williams?
I have one question, Debbie. The planned unit development that's there now, it's...
It's called Bell Haven.
Bell Haven.
Yes.
In their CCNRs, they are restricted from being a vacation rental?
No, they're not.
No, they're not.
They're not?
No.
So, I'm not sure I understand what you were suggesting happened there.
Well, what you're proposing would also provide that limitation to Bell Haven.
Sure.
Because it's a blanket limitation. Instead of allowing for the VRDs to be in that, that planned unit development that was developed for that purpose, like Olivia Beach, and you could still provide for rental there. And it, you know, it's not oceanfront, and it's at the beginning of Rhodes End, and that there is exits out port. So, there is an exit out of Rhodes End that isn't Logan Road all the way through. So, I just think it would be a really, a good planning move to allow them, if they wanted to. But you've taken VR zone off, off the table. No one can apply for it anymore. And we have that planned unit development, and we have the planned unit development in Bayview. I don't know if Bayview wants that. It's not as close to the ocean, but I think they should be given that opportunity. That's just my input.
Any more questions? Commissioner Cunningham?
Yeah, Gary.
All the question. So, the one at Bell Haven that we authorized recently, I think, how long have they been building there? How many, how many units are occupied?
Years. How long?
He's not here.
Seven years. His father's here. Seven years.
And what percentage of it is built out? Do you know?
I don't know.
What percentage? How much?
Seventy-five percent.
Okay. So, at this point, is it all owned? Seventy-five percent of the units are owned? And I guess my next question would be, how many have applied for VRD licenses?
I know there are some VRDs in there.
Ah? And, okay, so, what kind of units are we talking numbers-wise?
And you would just like to see all forty of them be VRDs?
No, I would like them to have the opportunity, like...
They do. There's still twenty-three permits still left to apply for.
I understand that. But if you're looking for a place to congregate vacationers, where it was built and planned for, because they have amenities that would allow for that, that group of people, along with smaller closets and that kind of thing, which isn't necessarily something a full-time resident wants, right? I just think it would be a great idea to be, for that to be allowed. So, we can still allow for vacationers to come here, even if you limit, and I'm not speaking towards the limit that you're going to put on the rest of Rhodes End. I...
So, you want to, you want this to be excluded from the rest of the cap? But, so, when this place was built, if they didn't have a secure plan for them to all be our VRD, why is it the rest of the neighborhood's fault that they didn't have a good business plan?
Maybe I can phrase the question differently. Is that okay?
Yeah, go for it.
Olivia Beach applied for the VR zone, and they were granted that. Bell Haven had the same opportunity, correct?
Yes. I just don't think they were as organized. I didn't think they were as organized. And at the time that the VR zone was granted, it wasn't said that there would be no more opportunity. That was done afterwards.
One more question. Are they, were they in the county, Bell Haven?
Yes.
So, they had a hundred percent VRD possibility?
Correct. But even Olivia Beach...
They were in the county.
Steve, excuse me, Steve.
Commissioner Robinson?
I don't think we're, we're getting Mr. Oxon Holt's testimony on record.
You're not.
Perhaps, perhaps we should call, ask him to come up.
If he would like to come up, he's more than welcome to come and testify.
I don't know that this is what he wants to do. I'm just trying to make a point that these neighborhoods were planned unit developments. They have, they don't have the issues that having vacation rentals right next to small residential homes, as you do in Ocean Lake and Rhodes End, because they were built for this purpose.
I one-hundred percent agree with you. I mean, I think that having a development like that, it's a good idea, but it sounds like they dropped the ball in the beginning and the, and, and why go backwards?
I think your point is very clear, Deborah. Yeah, we'll take it into our considerations.
Right. And it's not what you think. So, I would love to discuss it with you later.
Okay. I'm willing to learn everything I can.
Thank you. Yeah. All right, folks on the commission, I have a note that's in my script here, and the note is to me. And it says, "At this time..." Oh, wait a minute. I'm not finished. "Is there any comment from representatives of public agencies?" None. Okay. So, written testimony was included in the published meeting packet. Any letters received after packet publication have been copied and given to the planning commission tonight, and we received four or five of them this evening. And now, I'll get to the note that's to me. So, "At this time, we need to determine if the public hearing and record should be closed, or if there's sufficient time tonight for the commission to deliberate and make a recommendation. If not, the hearing and/or record may remain open and would be continued to Tuesday, August 1st, 2017 at 6:00 PM, if the commission so moves." So, commission members, Commissioner Robinson?
Is it an option to close the hearing and resume the deliberations?
Next meeting?
Yes.
I'll ask our attorney.
Of course, you can close the hearing. You can also close the record, and then you can continue deliberations to your next meeting. If you're going to close the hearing, that's one thing, but you don't necessarily have to close the hearing and the record. If there's something you would like from staff, for example, you can tell us, go add this to the record, or leave the record open for, you know, however long you'd like, if you'd like additional information. I haven't heard any specific requests for information, but...
I haven't heard any either, but we certainly can ask that question. Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, I, to me, it was just kind of vague, and maybe Mr. Townsend could clarify the, the issue of the VR zone. If I recall, the VR zone was only around for a couple of years, and we canceled it. Is that correct?
Essentially, that's the, that's the case. What we, what the council did recently was say that they're not going to allow any more property to be rezoned into the VR zone because of the provisions that were put in, allowing in the R-1-5 zone, a high number of vacation rentals, relatively high number, you know, the cap of ten percent.
Thank you. Thank you. And, and that's not really...
I'm sorry, didn't hear you.
That fact is the law. It's actually in an ordinance, so we could share that with you, even if you close the hearing and close the record. So...
Thank you. So, how do we feel, commissioners?
I would like to continue deliberation.
That's one for continuing. Anyone else for continuing?
Yes, I want to continue.
You want to continue?
Yes, sir.
Am I hearing you're saying you want to keep the hearing open?
No.
We can have deliberations later. Okay, so, closing the hearing and closing the record still allows us to deliberate tonight?
Well, is, is my understanding that if we want additional information that isn't in the law, we need to keep the record open? Is that correct?
Generally, we leave the record open for a period of time. I mean, at some point, you have to stop and deliberate on what you have. So...
I understand. I understand.
And I wasn't suggesting that you ask us to give you additional information. It's just one of the options you have is continue the hearing, in which case you hear additional testimony. Leave the record open for a certain number of days, which would allow the members of the public that didn't speak or didn't submit the written comments to submit additional written comments. And if there was something specifically you wanted from staff, we could go get it and put it in the record. Of course, the record continues because this goes on with the recommendation from you to the city council. So, there'll be other opportunities for people to submit things. Just at some point, you have to stop gathering information and then discuss it. So, I wasn't trying to push you toward opening, leaving the record open, just if you wanted to do that, that was an option.
So, would it make sense, commissioners, for us to close the public hearing now and then leave the record open for, say, a week or ten days, and then begin our deliberation at our next meeting? Any...
Yes, I agree.
Gary?
I agree. I, I'm almost wishing we had just continued. I think there's still a lot of comment that we could gather, but Richard's, of course, saying, you know, at some point in time, we chop it off, and the council, it falls on their heads. And, you know, they kick it back to us, because they kick back every VRD issue. So, it's not like we won't get to talk about it again.
All right. So, do we have a motion? I can't make a motion, can we?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and close the record and close...
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing and the record. I'm asking...
You want to keep...
Let's give the record a ten-day period, but close the public hearing.
Keep the record open for ten days.
Keep the record open for additional two weeks.
Well, I think your next meeting was August 1st, so, yeah, that's two weeks away. So, if you want to go seven days, that'll leave the opportunity for people to submit written comments, and then you can...
Okay. Then I will amend that to a seven-day period.
Is there a second?
I second that.
And we have a voice, any voice vote, Kent?
Can you call forward?
Yeah, any discussion? Yes, let's call the roll.
Okay.
I mean, a roll vote, excuse me.
A roll call.
Skipping like...
Could you repeat the, so, it's closing the hearing?
I'm closing, asking to close the hearing and leave the record open for an additional seven days on this matter.
Okay. So, when you leave the record open and you close the public hearing, can the public still submit comments?
Yes. We're not, we're not going to come back here and speak at the podium.
Correct.
But anybody can submit anything in writing for seven days.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's submitted to the planning department, you know, five o'clock, whatever next Tuesday is.
Tuesday, July 25th.
And we will have copies of whatever that is prior to our next...
That'll come into your packet, and then you can read it before the next meeting, in addition to reading everything that you received for tonight.
Commissioner Robinson?
I believe the option we didn't talk about is leaving the hearing open also. Is that...
No, that's not part of the motion.
Yeah, it wasn't part of the motion.
I know.
The motion was to close the public hearing. What you're talking about is continuing the public hearing.
And, and why?
It was just one of the options. We were enumerating the options we have on the planning commission, and that's one of them.
I guess my question would be, what can we add that they can't add in writing?
I'm telling you, that's an option.
So, are we ready for a vote?
We have a motion.
And we have a second.
Ready? Okay. All right. Crowan?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Slessinger?
Yes.
Bryson?
No.
Kier?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
And Griffiths?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carried. Thank you. All right, so...
You would want a motion to continue deliberations to your meeting on August 1st?
I'm sorry, I did not hear what you said.
You should, you should take a motion to continue deliberations to your meeting on August 1st.
Some would like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
And we have a roll call vote, please, Kent?
Robinson?
Yes.
Slessinger?
Yes.
Kier?
Yes.
Crowan?
Yes.
Bryson?
No.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Cunningham?
Yes.
And Griffiths?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. So, before you all leave tonight, I want to thank you all for coming. This really is our local democracy at work, and I appreciate all of you taking the time to testify before us, and we listen carefully to what you said. And you'll be sure to read carefully any written testimony you submit between now and our seven-day deadline. So, thank you. And now's the time for any reports and comments from staff?
I have none.
Our attorney, none. From commissioners, none. All right, folks, tonight's meeting is adjourned. is adjourned.